Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. Meetings can now be viewed live on the City Channel and live streamed on YouTube. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. When you are announced, please give your name and neighborhood for the record, and you will be given three minutes. Our first speaker is Aikuhana Hal Malkina. Is Aikuhana Hal Malkina with us? If not, our next speaker is Kotekibe. Our next speaker is Kotekibe. Not seeing Mr. Kibbe. Our next speaker is Gabrielle Gray. Is Gabrielle Gray with us? Not seeing Gabrielle. That does exhaust our list of public speakers, which moves us on to our Standing Committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Cockhill?
Here.
Ms. Gross? Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Cale Smith? Mrs. Strasburger? Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair?
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you very much. Our first order of business today is actually invoices. We need a motion to approve the invoices.
I'm sorry, very brief discussion, if I may. So on the invoices under the mayor's office is the expenditure for Chief Lamar to attend Leadership Pittsburgh. As a former graduate of Leadership Pittsburgh, I'm really, really excited that Marty, Chief Lamar, was put through the Leadership Pittsburgh program, and I think it would bring great benefit to the city. So I just, I just wanted to recognize that. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the invoices? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Let the record reflect that we've also been joined by Councilwoman Strasburger. Next, we have P cards for approval. Need a motion for the P cards?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? And one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. Next, that takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor. First deferred paper, Bill 1087.
Bill 1087, ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinance is Title I, Administrative Article III, Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety, to add a new subsection 11617, prohibition on execution of no-knock warrants by requiring all city police officers when executing any warrant to physically knock and announce the presence of police before entering a premises.
Chair, I just wanted to say that we had a good executive session. You bring the prime sponsor, and we're all just working on a couple of technical things, and the willingness of the body is to make a motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Bill will be held two weeks. We've also been joined by Councilman Cockhill. New paper under Public Safety, Bill 1096.
Bill 1096, resolution authorizing the mayor and directing the Department of Public Safety to receive grant funding from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to assist in the city's emergency medical services efforts to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus not to exceed $246,212.49.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1097.
Bill 1097, resolution, amending resolution number 382 of 2019, authorizing the mayor and director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement with Freedom N D LLC, Reverend Cornell Jones, for professional services as a group violence intervention coordinator at a total cost not to exceed $327,465. Said agreement require amendment in order to change current and future funding sources to the Stop the Violence Trust Fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1098.
Bill 1098, resolution, amending resolution number 608, previously amended, entitled, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended two-year professional services agreement with the Center that Cares for the Purpose of Implementation of the Pittsburgh Group Violence Intervention and Street Outreach Program so as to switch current and future funding sources to the Stop the Violence Trust Fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1099.
Bill 1099, resolution, amending resolution number 308 of 2020, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended five-year professional services agreement with Roll Call Technologies LLC for a web-based secondary employment scheduling system in an amount not to exceed $853,925. Roll Call acquired Covering Assets LLC and is now the contracting entity instead of CYA. No other substantive changes to the terms of the agreement are required.
Motion to approve. Very brief discussion.
Second.
As the clerk just read the bill, this is our secondary employment, just a new company had bought them out and took over. Nothing changed from when we agreed upon it in the past.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Cockhill. First new papers, Bill 1093.
Bill 1093, resolution granting unto Smallman Holdings LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to extend and renovate existing docks and ramps located at 1606 Smallman Street in the 2nd Ward, 6th Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill was recommended. Bill 1094.
Bill 1094, resolution providing for the reimbursement to the Port Authority of Allegheny County for costs incurred for working the Fellow Field Avenue project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed $23,590.48.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing, Councilwoman Gross?
I apologize. I couldn't do my clicking for the last bill. You went so fast. I'll just, I could correct it on Tuesday. It says, I think, 6th Council District, and it's the 7th Council District. Just to test the technical terms. Now, quick. Bill 1094.
1093. Is that the 7th Council District?
That's right, strip district.
So noted. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. One new paper, Bill 1095.
Bill 1095, resolution providing for a professional services agreement with the Mark Hamilton Esquire, Primbo, Kenny, Greiner, and Kerr to provide legal representation as a solicitor of the Commission on Human Relations in an amount not to exceed $90,000.
Motion to approve. Very brief discussion.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you. Yeah, this is our yearly budgeted expenditure to cover legal representation for the Human Relations Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill was recommended. That takes us to our Land Use Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. One supplemental paper, Bill 1129.
Bill 1129, resolution, amending resolution number 647, adopting and approving the 2021 capital budget and the 2021 CDBG program, the 2021 through 2026 capital improvement program by adding $8,949,650.50 to reflect the allocation of emergency rental assistance from the Treasury Department and authorizing a subsequent agreement.
Motion to approve. Discussion. I just wanted to open up the floor in case other members had follow-up questions from our briefing. Okay. All right, it was very, very, very enlightening briefing, and since we have David Hutchinson on the phone, on the line, maybe we can just elaborate on where people can access these funds.
Sure. Good morning, David Hutchinson, Assistant Director for Capital Asset Management. The city is primarily going to be using the county's website for posting the application form itself. Currently, you can go to covidrentrelief.alleghenycounty.us and bookmark it. The application's not live yet, but there's a bunch of other resources there related to food and housing that people may find useful in the interim. There's also an opportunity to fill out a form so that you'll get contacted whenever the application goes live.
Okay, and is this available, like who should fill out the application? Renters? Landlords?
Correct. Yeah, renters can fill out the applications. The payments will then go directly to the landlords.
Okay.
This is, sorry, just to add something. I was on a call this morning about it with the developers of the online tool. So there have been roughly 2,400 people who've signed up for on that online tool so far, and 82% of them are renters and 12% landlords. So once the actual tool is available, all those individuals will get a email stating, you know, the website's live, please apply.
Okay, great. And for the public, can you elaborate on the difference between the HOF, Housing Opportunity Funds, for rental assistance, and these funds?
Sure, I think Whitney can probably provide a better detail than I can, but the HOF funds are funded through a pay-go-transfer from the city's capital budget each year, $10 million. The treasury funds are federal government funds that are going to be administered as a grant. So some of the eligibility is a little bit different between the program guidelines that the URA has written for the HOF Housing Opportunity Fund and what the Treasury Department is requiring the city to use for eligibility.
Okay, and what are those percent AMI differences?
Well, this, so the Treasury Department's Emergency Rental Assistance Program guidelines are actually under review and further elaboration right now, just due to the change in administrations. But the focus is renters within comes up to 80% of AMI with a particular focus on those at or below, households at or below 50% of AMI.
Okay, all right, thank you. I have no further questions.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson, for sort of opening up the space for questions. Sometimes I think of questions and we've already moved on, so. I, I know that this has been sort of promoted as a program that is one in the same with the counties to add up to a total of 36 million. Is this, I have this right? This is the bill that we're enacting that has, has been promoted as part of the county program as well, right? County has 28 million. We have 8 million or something, and it's okay. So I guess just to clarify, is there a pool of money that's only eligible for, that's only eligible for city, city renters, and then the rest is people who live outside of the city, or can people from the city access those county funds?
Both are correct. There's going to be a discrete pool of funds for city residents, but anybody calling into Action Housing or using the online application form would be directed to the correct pool based on their location.
Got it. Okay, and is there an enabling legislation that needs to still pass through county council in order for those funds to be accessible and for this program to get off the ground currently, or is this ready to go as soon as we pass this bill?
The physical form itself, I think they're trying to launch in early March, Whitney, if I'm correct. Our office is trying to do the best we can to get our part through efficiently, just because the need is so great and so urgent right now. But I'm not sure if the county, if the county's kind of buttoned things up on their side with authorizing legislation or not. We can check into that, though.
Yeah, I can check on that.
I mean, I think it's wonderful we're coordinating. I mean, the more that we can leverage one another's resources and offices and staff and then, you know, make sure that we're not duplicating efforts is really important, especially in these times. So I'm glad we're doing that. I was just curious as to how it was being managed and when it would be accessible. So, thank you. It's helpful.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. So also, I will just take the opportunity to say that I talked with Mr. Finstriven, Mr. Hutchinson yesterday at length, and they were very helpful in entertaining my concerns about the burden that we're putting on the applicants. So some of the feedback is that these are very long and difficult applications or that there's, there have been some funds over the last almost year where the landlord had to apply, and that's been an obstacle that have prevented some people from getting the benefits on different programs. I'm not sure about the city ones. It's hard sometimes to, you know, be specific when listening to constituents' concerns, and they're not sure what source of funds they were applying for. But then specifically what I heard in the briefing that I don't see in front of us, it's not easy to see here at the table, is that the Dollar Energy Fund is in this partnership. And one of the things I, I asked them to push for was to push Dollar Energy to make it easier for applicants, and it's included me who the kind of public-facing part of it will be, if it's Action Housing or if it's Dollar Energy Fund. And this may have progressed, and I don't want to derail the conversation. We can follow up another time, but when we first engaged Dollar Energy Fund to handle the Customer Assistance Program at PWSA, it was concerning how much of the program funds went to the contract, the Dollar Energy Fund, and not to the recipients. Which would be one thing on its own, except that they also handle other utility cash assistance, like, and discounts, like Lie Heap. And now we're giving them the rental assistance, right? And so for the people who are in distress, especially now in this even more distressing time, to have to do these three, four, five applications, I might have this wrong, if they are already kind of allowing it to lower overhead costs so that more of our program dollars actually get into people's hands, that would be wonderful. And if they are already kind of streamlining this application process so it is less of a burden to people in need, that would be also wonderful, but I, I can't know that, and I asked them to, to, to see about that. So I really appreciate you taking the time to talk through that with me.
Sure, we actually sent, yeah, we got feedback from the county this morning with some details based on the questions that council brought up in the briefing yesterday. They did confirm that it's going to be Action Housing is kind of the front-facing, client-facing entity. So Action would electronically refer clients to Dollar Energy. In terms of the, the multiple grants used for, for same utilities or different utilities, there's pretty strict rules around duplication of benefits. So we would need, if somebody were applying for utility assistance, they would probably use this in whole. And, and we wouldn't want to be using multiple grants for the same kind of utility bill, but yeah, Dollar Energy is electronically going to be linked with Action Housing to be able to get the referrals.
The way I'm imagining that is that Action Housing is actually staffing the intake and interacting with you.
Yes.
In, you know, looking for help, but then at the back end, Dollar Energy has this kind of setup to do the processing. Okay, so that like, the, who's keeping the funds? Are we holding the 8.9 million, or is like the county holding the 8.9 million?
We have it currently. They actually have already deposited the funds to us, so we pay.
So like, kind of, you're on the back end, just in terms of processing and the controller and all that kind of stuff, that's being, that's the interaction with Dollar Energy in the bureaucratic side, not the public side.
We would process invoices, yeah.
Okay, that, that I understand, and I can see how that's their capacity, and I just hope they're not charging you too much.
Yeah.
Follow up with me on that once. I know that's probably not even penciled out yet.
Yeah, and you'll probably hear this a lot from us. Things are still, still changing in terms of the regulations and the guidance, and we're also kind of doing new things and building new things. So the county is building new things, and so I think one of the challenges with this program, it's a great thing, is, is the 90-10 split is 90% is just the direct utility payments, it's the direct rent payments. Any staff time, we're thinking, the kind of thinking is that any staff time would have to come out of the 10%. So any Action Housing staff, any Dollar Energy staff, that would have to come out of the 10%. Our standard CDBG program runs on a 20% admin cap, which is, it's reasonable, but there are years where it's a little bit tight for us. So to do something completely brand-new and to build it from almost scratch with, with a 10% admin cap is challenging. I appreciate so much of what the county and Action Housing's already kind of done to plan things out and to add better equity and outreach components, including staffing a phone, a phone bank, so people can call in and get the application filled out if they don't have a computer.
I have been impressed consistently with all of the projects that have involved Action Housing over the last few years, I have to say. So thank you for that. That makes me feel a lot better. Appreciate it.
Thanks. The other thing, if I don't, you don't mind, if I quickly mention, because this was discussed a bit yesterday, was that, you know, getting resources out to difficult-to-reach communities. So there are going to be resource navigators is the intent, and that, I'm not sure operationally how this is quite going to work out. We're still, I'll try to figure that out, but there would be apparently roughly six direct provider navigators, you know, different sites throughout the city where we're not sure yet. But I know that groups such as the consensus group, the PHDC, and Operation Better Block, and Perry Hilltop Alliance, and so on, are just a few of the groups that are going to be involved in being resource navigators to assist people to apply.
It's excellent to hear. Thank you. That's where I, you know, in my district, where I see the neighborhood groups really stepping up with a lot of the mutual aid. They're already in touch with people who need food assistance, and that's wonderful to hear that we have people that we can use. And so thank you to all of those on-the-ground neighborhood groups who've been doing this work over the last year as well. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Cockhill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two quick things related to what Councilwoman Strasburger was saying. I believe that the county does not have to take action. You know, I'm about 98% sure. No action is needed in order to then, you know, access those funds. The other thing was, and I know Councilman Strasburger asked this, but I wasn't sure if I got the answer. So if we exceed our capacity in the city, so we go over $9 million in needs, can the city resident then tap into the county funds?
That's a good question. I'm actually not sure the answer. I'll have to look that one up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know yet, to be very honest. That actually was a question that was posed the other morning, and we're still trying to figure that out. It's just, yeah, as Dave mentioned, this is kind of a moving program because we're going to get further, I think, regulations in the, from the Treasury Department soon. No guidance. There's just very little, limited, two-page, two pages worth of guidance on this, so it's very slim. The other reality, too, to put out there is that there may be monies from the state coming through for this program, so, you know, it may not just be the 8.9 and the county's 27. There may be actually another pot coming through this, and depending on what happens, there may be another round of rent relief coming through.
So when you say, are they, do you know they currently fund this, or do we know?
Sorry, I'm just a few words in there.
Yeah. So when you say maybe coming from the state for this particular fund, we may get additional funds on top of that, and they are taking action, or we don't know, or they're talking about it, or do we know where that's at?
Well, apparently it's, this is what I understand so far. It's stuck in legislator, legislation, in the State House in terms of they have to come to an agreement apparently on how to expend the funds that they received from the Treasury Department, because they also got their own allocation. So there's, it's bottlenecked in, in Harrisburg. So I can check on that. I don't really know what the current status is of that.
And once they work through the bureaucracy, the will is there on the state to help supply this fund, I guess, is what we're getting at. Is that right?
Correct, and I understand the funds are there. It's just the, the politics behind it that has to be worked through.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Burgess?
Yeah, I I want to use this opportunity for us to, to introduce something I think we need to think about, and I don't have an answer for it, but I want us to think about it as we begin to come out of pandemic. Certainly, in the pandemic, all of our thoughts and concerns are with the crisis that our residents are having. But we need to start thinking very strategically about the best use of the Housing Opportunity Funds. To the extent we use the funds to provide immediate relief in social services, although helpful, we are blending with other programming and other funds that are available through the county, through other entities. So we are one of many providers that are providing resources for those needs, and certainly in the pandemic, we understand that, but when we get outside the pandemic, we need to start thinking about it thoughtfully, because that, that money, once it's spent, although extremely helpful to whoever receives it, is gone and has no long, long longevity in terms of benefit, and normally not any leverage. It doesn't leverage another dollars. It's just dollars that needy people use, and certainly is helpful. And it's an investment in their future, obviously. However, the investment in building affordable housing, the Housing Opportunity Fund, is one of very few sources that can be used to leverage other sources that can be multiplied tenfold normally in housing projects, so that if we invest a dollar into affordable housing projects, we can literally, usually, leverage that between five and 10 times in providing housing that will last 30 or 40 years for families. And so with the proper balance is, I'm not sure. I tend to, of course, because knowing that, you know, the affordable housing crisis, every, every, every problem is significant, right? It's, it's a matter of balancing in choices. But I do think that the Housing Opportunity Fund, given that it's taken from real estate, we need to think very thoughtfully about using more of its money to invest in affordable housing. to invest in affordable housing and less of it to do direct services, because we are duplicating, um, in some ways, uh, um, resources that are already available, and we are taking from resources that we may be the only source available. And so, especially as we start doing, thinking about a bond and other things, and I, again, I don't have the answer, and it's, it's a juggling act, I don't, I'm not suggesting one is better than the other, but one is certainly different than the other. And I just want to at least suggest that tension, that we need to have that conversation moving forward. Um, I mean, I, I, it's fair to say that Councilman Lovell and I, I think, I don't want to speak to him, but we've always been more on the invest in the brick and mortar, um, side of this conversation because, um, we know that this, this, this fund feels like God, that almost is not available in any other means and can be leveraged ten times once it's invested, so, um, again, I think that's a council decision, I think it's something we should think about, but I wanted to at least begin the conversation now and so that we can begin to, to, to come to some consensus, that's all.
Thank you, any other members? If not, just.
Second round?
Sure, second round, Council.
Is that okay? Just to respond to that briefly, I, um, it strikes me that we need to, thank you Reverend Burgess, I, it strikes me that we need to think about this as a whole ecosystem of possible funds and not just be siloed as council, because we look at what we can do as council, and I, you know, I'm still at the beginning phases of learning about all the different funding streams out there for the direct rental assistance, for things that the Housing Opportunity Fund does accomplish, and without being completely aware of what exists in the for-profit and non-profit sector, for instance, or what exists from different entities at other levels of government. If we can think about this as a whole ecosystem that we're a part of, I think it'll be an easier story to tell, and it'll be easier for us to make decisions based on what is out there in whole in the region and not just, you know, this one little slice of it in the city. That's all.
Thank you, um, one, I, I agree, um, in terms of thinking it, in terms of the whole ecosystem, the other thing we have to consider to Reverend Burgess's point is we are using our real estate department at the U R A to also, you do social service work with the dollars in the Housing Opportunity Fund. And so we're actually, while needed, we're also pulling them away from actually doing and moving more real estate development and more affordable housing projects forward, because they also have, also have to spend time. Um, I did have sort of a very brief conversation, um, with Director Perry, Jessica Smith Perry, about does it make sense? And we can get into how much do you reduce? But if we're going to keep doing sort of the social, social service side of the H O F, does it make sense to potentially send those dollars, shift them over to the county so that the people who are doing that full-time can do that and allow Jessica and her team to really do the real estate full-time and advance more projects forward? But again, that's part of the, sort of the larger conversation, but I'm certainly willing to have that. And I appreciate you bringing it forward. Are there any last, uh, words from members? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be recommended. Um, that exhausts our agenda for today, we do have a few meeting announcements. Um, next week, council will hold their regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, February ninth, and Wednesday, February tenth, at ten A M, respectively. And next Thursday, February tenth, at one thirty P M, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on bill ten forty-three as it relates to historic designation of Mellon Park. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form in its entirety on the council meeting schedule webpage. Registration deadlines are nine A M, the day of the regular and standing committee meetings, and eleven thirty M, the day of the public hearing. You may also register to speak by calling the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. Is there anything from members? Seeing none, we need a motion to excuse the absent member approved the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned.